See me to conduct our town's business. We thank you for your blessings that you so graciously provide to us. We ask that you give us wisdom and knowledge so that the decisions we make will be according to your will. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, council. Under item five, open forum, public comment. Is there anyone who has not signed up that wants to speak under open forum? Okay. Real quick, some guidelines. The council shall provide at least one period of public comment per month during a regular meeting unless no regular meeting is held that month. Any individual or group who wishes to address the council shall inform the town clerk any time prior to the start of the meeting and provide their name, address, and subject matter about which they wish to speak. Persons must be present if they wish to address council and comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. I also ask that you put your mobile devices on vibrator or silent or mute while we're in session. Okay. First person I have is Mr. Eddie Peru.
Hello, Eddie Peru, thirteen twelve Laurel Street, and I just was thinking on the way over here, that's a seventh home I pay taxes on here in the town. Hope you enjoy the next few minutes because I've got nothing but positive things to say. I want to thank you people for all the work you've done. When you think about the last six months, you've accomplished a lot. You should be proud of it, and I really appreciate how hard y'all are working. I've never seen a council have more meetings, more committee meetings, and work on more things in a short period of time. Some of the things you've gotten done already is you had a first-ever strategic planning session here in Valdez where the COG assisted you with finding out what citizens really think is important in our town, and I see y'all, five of y'all, taking action to fulfill what the citizens have asked for. You established three citizens committees, and I'd really like to thank what's going on at the facilities committee and also the drug and homeless committee where I see much progress being made on both of those committees. We had a situation where the pool bubble that we knew, everyone in town knew for a long, long time, it was a problem. It had been kicked down the road, nothing had gotten done, and in short order, this council, the five of you folks, came together, came up with a good solution, and maybe by November, December, January, whatever it takes, we're gonna have a lot better facility at the rec department as far as the pool goes than we've ever had. I just said to David Anderson a few minutes ago, when I go in that bubble, look around, it was depressing, it was like you couldn't see anything. It just was nothing compared to what you're gonna get done, and I appreciate all of y'all's efforts to try to come up with a solution that'll help the citizens for many years to come. Also, the rock school renovation is being done, and if anybody's been there, you can see what wonderful work's going on. You should be proud of yourself for doing that, for taking on that project, and we want to thank Marissa for the effort she put in getting the grants and overseeing the project. As it started, we didn't know if we'd get new seats or not, and now we're going to, and there's just a lot more getting done than we originally thought was gonna get done. So there again, thank you, council. That's great. Also, you fired an architect that seemed to be able to get nothing done after two or three years on a building that was really gonna be built in the wrong place. So what did you do as a council? You have bought land that I think every fireman and every policeman in town, as well as the citizens would say, is in a better place than Pineboro. So thank you for having the foresight to buy that land, which will be close by here, and we can get a facility put there. You also hired a new police chief. I've lived here on and off most of my life, and I haven't heard one negative comment about our new police chief. He's here tonight, he's doing a great job. Rather than say we don't have a homeless and drug problem, he is working with the committee to do something about that. So I congratulate you on hiring him in short order and getting the right person for this important job. Also want to talk to you about the fact that most politicians talk about doing things and never do them, but it does look like you're lowering the tax rate and you're balancing the budget, as far as I can tell, we'll find out tonight. But last year, even with the horrendous tax increase, you still dipped into the funds for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It looks like you're not gonna do that this year. You've also given, I understand, gonna give raises to employees, which is much needed, much deserved, and I appreciate your efforts, and I'm sure all the employees do as well. We have a lot of great employees, we need to keep them. I understand you're also looking into paving more miles, I mean getting more miles per dollar paved by looking into the DOT, doing some of that. And the great thing, too, is that people said, we can't lower the tax rate without cutting services or getting rid of people, but correct me if I'm wrong, nobody's been fired, and this council doesn't really seem to intend to fire people, like other people might say. So for me, I'm really pleased with the direction, the trajectory the town is going on. And in the words of the Rolling Stones, "You can't always get what you want." You can't always get your want, but if you try sometime, you just might find you'll get what you need.
Okay. Mr. Zam Kamal.
Hello, everybody. My name's Zam Kamal, three-two-nine North Rutterit Street. I live on the famous street that always has sewer problems. The last one was Ms. Kaplan. Currently, it's our house. Our backyard has been demolished. To get into the, to find out what's going on, we have a manhole in our backyard. We have pulled towels, shirts out of our basement. Currently, we have three plugs that the plumber put in over the toilet in the basement, the shower, and the drain. We cannot use any of that stuff. It's plugged up with this yellow, I don't even know what it's called, but I talked to Alan. I know there is a CIP, is that the right acronym? That needs to go through approvals and all that, but that's two, three-year problem. In the meantime, I have a plumber who needs to know what to do with this manhole sitting in the back porch and potential, nothing against National Guard, they, we didn't have a writer to cover the cleanup and the fixes, but we did add it, but I'm afraid now it's the same issue. If it happens again, is it grandfathered in? Is it ignored because it's the same issue? It might happen again. I can't, we can't wait two years. We gotta get it fixed now, and it is a mess in our yard right now. It's a total mess, and we can't, we started, we got to go ahead to start using our washing machine and, because we couldn't earlier, it was always backed up. So I just need the town's help to figure out what to do. That's why I'm here. I've got two minutes and fifty-seven seconds, but that's all I got. So thank you.
Thank you, Zam. Okay. I have no others signed up to speak during open forum. Moving on to consent agenda, there is no consent items to be considered. We'll move on to item seven, new business. First item A is a public hearing, and at this time, council will call for the public hearing on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, public hearing and ordinance adoption. Since this is a public hearing, I now declare the public hearing open and ask for Bo or our manager to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I don't know if you want to allow the public to speak first, or if you would like me and Bo to say a few things.
Y'all go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. May I make a request? Could we clarify for the attendees if there is the possibility of making any amendments, changes to the budget before we adopt it tonight, or is this just for future consideration?
This is for the adoption of the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Yeah, I think the citizens would like to know if they comment and have a request, such as we heard one, that may have to do with sewage, but if they have a request, is that something we can, if there's a problem, if there's a need, is that something we can deal with tonight, or is that something that must, can be in the future?
It'll have to be in the future.
No changes tonight?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Folks, we've had several meetings and worked through the budget with the council, and there were opportunities for input from council members, and when we had a consensus of council, we made those changes, and Bo reflected all those changes in what is now the budget ordinance or the budget for the coming year. And if you'd like him to go into some details, or if there are questions the council might have, we'd be glad to try and answer them.
Council, you have questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you. Are there any members of the public who would wish to address the budget ordinance? Ms. Caruso, you would be first since you signed up, ma'am.
Karen Caruso, eight oh five Michael Avenue. Before I begin, I would like to make sure I understand as well. So there will be no changes to the budget, correct?
As presented tonight. It is possible to make modifications before it's voted on. That would require an additional meeting, is that?
I think that would depend on what the modification is and whether or not Bo and our manager need time to react to it. It could require us to continue to another meeting before the actual budget as modified is voted on by council.
Thank you for that clarification, because if changes were not permissible, then my comments would be moved, so thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to ask you to approve the five percent employee pay increase in the proposed FY-24-25 budget. Please consider these reasons. Inflation continues to erode purchasing power and has for several years. The latest unemployment rate for Burke County is at the lowest rate it's been this calendar year. Competition for employees among local and state governments is not going away. Your own strategic plan places a priority on employee retention, and employees shouldn't have to fund their own training. The Consumer Price Index, or CPI, measures the change in prices paid by consumers for goods and services. The annual CPI for 2021 was seven percent. In the FY-21-22 budget, town employees received a two percent pay increase. The 2022 CPI was six and a half percent. Employees received a five percent increase in FY-22-23 budget. CPI in 2023 came down to four point one percent, and employees received a five percent increase in FY-23-24 budget. These CPI numbers include prices for food, but anyone who goes to the grocery store knows when food is broken out of these numbers by themselves, the increase in cost is well above these percentages. You can get by without buying a lot of things, but food is not one of them. At the last council meeting, it was heartbreaking to hear that a citizen witnessed town employees receiving food assistance from area church ministries. Full employment is generally considered to be an unemployment rate of five percent or lower. Some economists questioned this and suggested that it should be three percent. Last month, the unemployment rate for Burke County was three point one percent. That's full employment by most economist standards and indicates that anyone who really wants a job is likely able to find one. It also means it's easier for those with jobs to find another one if they're not satisfied with their current employment situation. You can bet all the municipalities in the uniform and the state institutions in Morganton are aware of the competition for good employees. Western Piedmont Community College has ten full-time positions available. There are nearly one hundred full-time state job openings at various facilities in Morganton. A quick look for full-time municipal jobs shows multiple openings in Morganton, Burke County, and Hickory. Some of these positions even include generous signing bonuses, but the competition for our folks is definitely not limited to governmental entities. The private sector is much larger, and they have deeper pockets. Employee retention emerged as a key priority of your SWOT analysis during the strategic plan process. Support your own plan by giving the town's most important asset competitive pay. The optics of not doing so are going to be very poor on the heels of giving yourself a huge raise at the last council meeting. I'm all for employee training and think it's a great idea, but don't do it on the backs of employees by reducing their pay increase to fund it. The strategic plan mandates that you must do your part to retain our experienced, dedicated employees who serve us so well. Please do not erode your employees' buying power further and continue to force them into seeking food assistance. Vote yes for the five percent pay increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Hearing none, then I will declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions for the manager now, if I might, about the budget.
Go ahead.
I was told we were to have a few charts presented, but we're not gonna do that? Or we are? Are we, or are we not?
Yes.
We are?
I've got a small presentation.
Pardon?
I've got a small presentation we can do.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, I thought, you know, it would've been nice to have that before the hearing, perhaps, but just two or three things real quickly. What, what cost of living increases in this budget?
Five percent.
Five, thank you. Is there a training allocation as well?
Yes, sir.
How much?
Twenty-five thousand.
Thirty thousand, including police?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Have any essential services been cut?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
You still want to do the presentation?
Council, anyone else have questions?
It's just gonna be a recap.
Go ahead.
All right, so just kind of give an overview of what we're doing here tonight. So fund categories that Valdez uses, so these are North Carolina statute-based budgeting tools that we use in North Carolina. So annual budget ordinance is one type, and then we also have a capital project ordinance. The difference between the two is the capital projects, we've heard that word a lot, those funds remain the life of the project, so we don't have to renew it every year, whereas the annual budget ordinance, which we're talking about tonight, those funds expire at June thirtieth every year, so that's why we have to adopt a new budget before June thirtieth. Under the umbrella of each of these, the annual budget ordinance is a general fund and water and sewer fund in Valdez. So remember, the general fund is supported by taxes, and then our water and sewer fund is supported by the sales of utilities, mainly water and wastewater. Under capital project ordinance, we have the capital project fund. So these aren't all our funds on here, but I've put a few samples, and these are all either supported by the general fund contributions, utility fund contribution, grants, things like that. So you've got the pole structure, the public safety building, those are all capital projects that fall under this. So once that project is established by council, that's the end of it until the, until that project is done, then I close it out. We don't have to renew a budget every year for it. But what we're doing here tonight is focusing on the general fund and a water and sewer fund, so that's our annual budget ordinance that we want to get adopted. So I'm just gonna run through some highlights of the general fund, and we'll do a few highlights of the utility and just answer some questions if anybody has any. So for the general fund budget, we're looking at seven point six million dollar budget, so that's a balanced budget between revenues and expenditures. It includes a forty-one and a half cent tax rate, and the budget includes five hundred thousand dollars for street resurfacing. There's a two dollar recycling fee increase. Our two top revenue sources in the general fund are property taxes, so we're looking at about two point two million for that, and then sales taxes, so any food or items are purchased at one point eight million dollars. So remember, sales taxes happens anywhere in Burke County, so as long as the purchases being made within Burke County, we get a cut of those sales taxes. Debt represents three percent of the total expenditures, so three percent of that seven point six million dollar budget is allocated to debt service payment. We have twenty-five thousand dollars in there for townwide training, as you heard a little bit ago, initial five thousand for police. And then some capital investments, I didn't put them all here, but just some of the highlights. We have bowling center upgrades in the budget at the Parks and Rec Center, clock tower repairs downtown, and then some public safety vehicles, including a medic truck and a patrol car. So that's it for what I've got for general fund. Is there any questions on the general fund side?
Counsel?
Instead of trying to go through every number and stuff, I thought this might be a little more interactive.
That's good. Go ahead, the utilities.
Okay. So water and sewer fund, this budget, we're looking at six point eight million dollars, a balanced budget between revenues and expenditures, and just a note that we, this budget serves about five thousand four hundred and fifty customers. Top revenue sources, easy to guess here, residential water sales and sewer discharge, so about three and a half million for water and one and a half million for sewer. So we have a zero increase for inside water rates. Sewer base fee will increase two dollars and fifty cents per month, and then there's a one and a half multiplier built in to outside water rate. So we look at the inside rate, which is gonna be thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, so that's remaining the same. Multiply that by one and a half, so that gives you your outside rate of fifty-seven Something new for this year, the old triple community customer base will now be included with the outside customer rate, so that one and a half multiplier. Debt represents five percent of the expenditures, and then some capital investments included with this budget are water plant, replacing the air-actuated valve operators, also over at the water plant, upgrading the booster station and tank telemetry, the wastewater plant's getting iteration-based upgrades, and under the water and sewer distribution department is replacing a jetter system to help clean out the sewer lines. So any questions on that?
Just a couple, please.
Okay.
We have fifty-four, fifty outside customers. Roughly how many inside customers we have?
Fifty-four, fifty is all our customers combined.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's split, we have about twenty-two hundred inside, and the remaining are outside.
Roughly half and half, so a little more on the outside.
Correct.
So Valdez is providing water to more than the number of people we have using it.
Yes, sir.
One more, if, if this fund supports itself through fees, right? If there's a crash of some type, the river dries up, Charlotte took all our water, or our water plant crashes, and we can no longer sell water outside, we'd have to limit it to just all these residents, we end up with a big chunk of debt, who's responsible for that debt?
The town would be responsible for it.
Taxpayers in the end.
Ultimately, I guess if you want to look at it that way, it could be, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I got one more slide.
Bo, I've got a question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the general fund, we have three percent of expenditures and utility fund is five percent, so looking down the road at future needs for facilities, you know, most importantly, the police and fire facilities, are we in good position to take on additional debt obligations?
If need be, I think we could handle something like that. You have three percent of a six, or seven point six million dollar budgets, our payment's two hundred and thirty-four thousand a year, so that's a very small percentage of our general fund.
So you feel comfortable with our debt load obligations? I mean, it's pretty low compared to our total expenditures.
Yeah. That would be a council decision, though.
Okay.
Okay. All right. One more slide. So what's next? So next, next few minutes, council decide on adopting the budget. Once that happens between tonight and the end of the month, I'll be keying all these budget numbers into the accounting system. June thirtieth, our current budget numbers expire. The next day, July first, the new budget opens, so that's why I gotta have these numbers keyed in, so that new budget opens, and then between August, October, those timeframes, we get an audit on the current budget that we're in right now and the financial transactions that has happened during this budget year. So then the whole process starts over again. After October, we start the whole new budget, so. But I just want to give you a overview, what's, what's kind of the process and what's next. Okay?
Okay.
Two more questions, please. Real quick one, the most important one. Will this forty-one and a half cent tax rate be implemented by the Burke County when they collect our taxes and send their bills out next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second one, could you elaborate just a little bit on our reserve funds, where they are, what, how much we have, how they're invested, how they return income to us?
Yeah. So the general fund reserves, last year, we ended around six point six million. Our revenues projected, we're looking at the end of May, so projected revenues are gonna be about, I think it was six hundred and seventy-five thousand over expenditures, so we're gonna have a surplus there. Throughout this past budget year, we've pulled about seven hundred and three thousand out of fund balance to supply some projects and stuff, and I got a detailed sheet if we need to see that, but included things like the strategic plan, interim manager, things, things like that. So those two almost balance each other out, they wash, so I'm still projecting and estimating. Of course, the auditors do a real measurement on June thirtieth, what our fund reserves are, but I'm thinking we're gonna be around that, stay around that six point six million mark, which is good after pulling out seven hundred thousand over the past year, so that's good there. Far as what we do with those funds, we maximize our investments as much as possible. I keep about two weeks' worth of operating money in our checking account, just enough to pay the bills. The rest of it, we get, we invest in some liquid investments, and we're very limited on what we can do as far as North Carolina laws. We use, right now, we're using the Capital Management Trust as an outside advisor to help with those investments, but they're liquid, so I transfer in and out so that as we need the money, we can bring it in. If we have excess in our checking account, I send it back out to be invested. Our current rate of return is five point two one percent. I'm hoping last two months, I think two months ago, council approved us going with another outside firm called NC Class. I don't remember what the acronym stands for, it's kind of long. Their rate of return is slightly higher, so I'm gonna try to diversify to them as well. I just haven't had time with budget things going on to finalize all the paperwork and stuff on that end, but, so I guess, big picture, of the six point six million, we're investing as much as we can so we can get that rate of return in, and that's actually helped out a lot, having that six hundred and seventy-five thousand of revenues over expenditures. I think about five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand of that was unexpected interest income, so.
There was some expected, why?
Just in, interest income that we, we've gained, 'cause we're, we're pushing now as investments as much as we can.
So we ended up with how much interest income this year?
Um, I can't remember exactly, but I think it's gonna be, we're gonna end up around six hundred thousand.
And how much are we budgeting next year?
Um, I think it's three hundred thousand, 'cause we just don't know what the markets are gonna do.
No, the interest income, next year, in this fiscal?
I have to, I have to take a look, but I couldn't remember.
I'm looking at two hundred forty three thousand.
Okay, two forty three, okay.
Is there a little margin of opportunity there that we may end up not having less interest income in the next twelve months than we had in the last twelve?
It, it's, you know, I can't predict the future, so, um, we could have the same amount, which I hope for, but we wanna be conservative, so that's why we have two forty three built in the budget.
What could happen to drop it in half, more than half, would it be?
Anything could happen.
You think banks are gonna cut rates in half in the next twelve months?
I, I can't predict it, I don't know. I'm not an economist, so I'm sorry.
Our economists are not predicting that, but we don't have to, that's fine. It's good to have a little cushion, and it looks to me like we might have three, four hundred thousand dollar cushion there. Is that possible?
I hope so.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Any other questions on the budget?
Counsel? Hearing none, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the twenty four, twenty five budget ordinance as proposed. And if, when you make your motion, if you would include all four of those items that's listed under A, and we'll do it in one motion.
I'd love to make that motion, if I might. Sorry, I don't even want to have any questions. Uh, and I appreciate that clear presentation we had, and that information was very helpful, and I'm sure our citizens appreciate it as well. So I therefore move, and I don't have the right wording here, but that we adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget, public here, uh, uh, budget as presented, including the adoption of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five fee schedules, adoption of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five general fund capital improvement plan, adoption of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five utility capital improvement plan, and adoption of the budget ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, have a motion. Second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. This has been a lot of hard work. We've put in a lot of hours and time in working out this year's budget, and I compliment the council on the hard work that they've done, and also Bo and Brian on their, their guidance, but I think we've, you know, it's been give and take, and I really just wanted to compliment everyone on the hard work that they've done.
Absolutely, I appreciate the hard work that all of the councils put in, and Bo, you and Brian, thank you, and the department heads. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, item B, Facilities Review Committee to report.
I'm Roger Evans, Gregory For, we are co-chairs of the Facilities Committee, and, uh, just a short update on the public safety facilities. Last week, we were a site visit to the public safety building by Tally and Smith Architectural Firm. This is a group that has hired, we've hired to develop a new public safety facilities. This tour was conducted by Fire Chief Truman Walton and Police Chief Mark Sharp. As in previous inspection by several engineering and architectural firms, it has been suggested the fire and police officers be relocated to a different facility. The reason being, the walls are deteriorating and creating a potentially dangerous condition. This coupled with the fact that it's probably going to take two years to complete the new facilities. There are several potential locations in the valley to fill these needs. After looking at different locations, it's being recommended by Facilities Review Committee, the Old Town Hall be renovated for temporary fire and police officers. There are numerous reasons for this, some of which be close proximity to all police and fire facilities, such as armory, computer equipment, trucks, and available parking. Once the new public safety facilities are completed, this Old Town Hall will become very marketable as a potential lease or sale property. These capital improvements will only enhance this property. This time for any questions from the council or comments.
Questions, counsel?
Is there enough, um, I'll ask, is there enough room for both groups in the Old Town Hall facility? And the, I know there are certain, uh, requirements for a public safety, for the police particularly, and will we have, um, the things that are needed for the police department to be functional?
This, the architectural firm, we feel like that's a good, a true statement, that there's room. There's, there's more room down there than there are in the police department, there are offices.
Okay, there is more room.
Right.
It's actually about twice as much space.
You, now, when you're talking about the Old Town Hall, if you look at the, the building, the fire, it's over there to the left.
Right, yes.
Okay, and that needs to be renovated?
It's going to be renovated, it's gonna have to have, uh, ceiling tiles, uh, drywall, floors, bathrooms, but it's.
One AC unit.
Yeah, one AC.
And y'all are recommending that police and fire both go into that building?
Right.
And there's enough room for offices and that?
Yes. They've already got a lot of facilities there now, and they'll be close to the armory and their computers, uh, you know, internet and all that stuff, they'll have their network, and they'll be all close to that, and trucks and everything, so.
And that will get them out of the current police chief's office?
Yes, police and fire chiefs.
And, and that is counting both floors, I guess, there's two, okay, there's two floors.
There, there, there is a lot of room in that building, upstairs and downstairs, there's no question.
And once we get it renovated, I mean, it'd be, be, uh, marketable for a lease or maybe a sale or whatever, but, uh, you know, it's, it's probably the best option we have to get them out of the existing town, I mean, fire and police department.
Evidence room, there's room for evidence room and keeping, um.
See, they can keep all that, all of that stuff in all of the existing offices.
Okay, so, okay.
So you leave that stuff over there where it is now?
Whatever's, whatever they save yet, probably, the armory, and they can leave, leave all that there.
People here.
The people's what we're looking to move out, people.
Excellent. My, my question is this, and being familiar with codes and OSHA regulations, if we evacuate our people, because the, the architect, that's what he said, is that correct? That was my understanding. If we evacuate our people, and they still have to go back in that building for, for supplies or to get to the armory or to get to our, the town, the towns, uh, all of the town's IT equipment is in that building, that controls our phones and everything. And we have to have, uh, maintenance personnel, like they will work on the phone system or the computers in there. What challenge does that present to us?
Oh, excuse, excuse me, we're, I think we're getting the questions ahead of, of the, uh, horse. The architecture and engineering firm has not yet come into that building with their engineering staff and not sat down with the police chief and the fire chief to identify exactly what the needs are and what the opportunities are. So we, I think the committee just gave a report of what we learned last Thursday, and now we're, we're letting people know, we're moving ahead, and as fast as we can, we need to get together the, uh, police chief, the fire chief, the architect, he's got an engineering services firm he's gonna bring in. They're gonna analyze this, find out what it's gonna take.
This was just, this was just a recommendation.
Okay, okay, that's what I was thinking we were gonna move on this.
No, no, it's just a recommendation.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
He said, they recommend that we move the police and fire out, it's not a catastrophic event, he said, just a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So the, the police and fire chief will have input on this process.
Absolutely.
Well, I also know that the, uh, the visiting task force recommended using part of this building for police and/or fire.
Well, it's, it's, like I say, we've got several options.
Yeah, there's several, and that, that also would be an option.
Right.
That we could look at. A, as you look at the number of people, I'm not sure, eight or nine people here with this large facility that we have, I think it's very visible that we are visible or viable, whatever the word, uh, that we can use this building.
But it's, you know, you've got, it's in close proximity to their existing facilities now, so it, you know, we've got several options to look at.
And, and so this would be, at least for now, would be a temporary solution?
Probably, probably a two-year process, because it'll probably take two years to build a building, so it's probably a two-year process.
But we'll still meet with the police and fire chief and the committee and architect.
Just, just a start.
Okay, thank you, Roger, I appreciate it.
Thanks, y'all, I appreciate it.
Police chief and the fire chief have been copied on every communication on this project.
They've been every meeting, you know, so we're, we're working with them.
I just want to ensure they have their input.
They, we've been working with them every meeting.
I appreciate y'all, what you're doing, thank you.
We do, thank you.
Okay. Street paving updates. Mr. Hudson?
Give me, Mayor and Council. As you, you had in your packet, the, uh, the street paving panel, we came up with a, a list of streets, which was, uh, thirty streets, that has been sent to DOT and got back some information from them, wording that, uh, by the end of the month, first of July, we should have some numbers in. And then we would be able to go forward from there as far as what we can or can't do with the, with the numbers and pricing. It, I mean, it just depends on how they come back. Got an email today that, you know, once we get those, and then we can meet with the, the contractors and the supplemental agreements and things like that, but once we get the numbers back, uh, we'll know more about which, which direction or what we can do and the footage or the mileage that we'd be able to do.
Sounds good. Counsel, questions?
Uh, if I, if I might, uh, thank you, thank you, Alan, Alan's done a lot of work on this, which is great. The old school teacher in me and the old incurable planner, let me just throw out a, a couple of things. Our, our budget this year for repaving is five hundred thousand dollars. Our budget last year for repaving was five hundred thousand dollars. Last year, the town repaved one point three, four miles of streets. Based on the preliminary estimates, using DOT's numbers, DOT would be able to pave two point four miles of streets for five hundred thousand dollars. That's not quite twice as much, but a significantly greater amount. Uh, on top of that, DOT would handle the entire project, they would manage it from beginning to end. So that leaves the council, then, in the future, when we get these numbers back for all these, it's actually thirty two streets. If you add those thirty two streets up, which I did, it's seven point three six miles altogether, thirty two streets. If you look at that list, that covers a lot of Valdez. But it's only seven thirty, point three six miles, it's still only one-fifth of our streets. The total cost using DOT's estimates for that is one and a half million. But if we rounded it down to, uh, five miles of streets, that would be a million dollars. That would be the equivalent of this year's allocation for paving, plus one more year. Or if it went to six miles, it would be one and a quarter million dollars. Or for all seven miles, well, for seven miles, it's one and a half million. So I think, I just wanna put out to the council and to the citizens, because I think when citizens see this list of thirty two streets, they're gonna say, oh, my list, my street's on here. But we have to make some decisions. And one of the decisions the town's gonna have to make is, do we limit our paving this year to five hundred thousand dollars? And two point four miles, still almost twice as much as we did last year, but do we limit it to that? Or do we consider what it might cost to borrow enough money to do two years or three years of paving? At this time, under current costs, will we save more on the potential increase in the cost of asphalt and paving if we spend a little money borrowing money? Or one other possibility is, we saw that we have about six million dollars in our reserves. The town has the option, and it has not in the past, it did it three years ago, to borrow money from the reserves and then pay it back for the next three or four years, or whatever length of time it takes, out of the power bill funds that we receive each year to use for paving. So it's a, it's a, it's a very optimistic picture and an opportunity, and the question's gonna come down to the council is, do we wanna, do we wanna extend ourselves as private industry might by investing in the future? Or do we wanna just continue pay as we go or pay as, as power bill funds let us go? So I just wanna try to make that clear, but the choices are again, last year, this past year, we did one point three miles of streets for a half million dollars. This year, DOT's estimating we could do two point four miles for a half million dollars. And we could do all thirty two streets for a little over a million and a half. We could come up with a creative way to raise on a million dollars.
And I have it broke up into, into four segments, based on the preliminary pricing. Uh, we could do, you know, five streets, ten streets, fifteen, or the thirty two streets. And I've got those broken down into different pricing.
Right.
Per mile, of, of what those would be, but like I said, that's just from the preliminary price, and once I get the other pricing to, to a more closer number, then I can break it down into, and may add some or have to take some off, so it just depends on what the pricing is when I get it back, to what we can do. And then it'd be up to y'all's decision, how y'all wanna do it, and what, what we wanna do.
It's a great effort, thank you, thank you very much. We just don't wanna get into feuding with the people on Toronto Avenue, feuding with the people on Harris Avenue, because our street got, or they didn't get it, so, thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? Thank you, Alan. Okay, item D, consideration of local Realtors listing town-owned properties. Mr. Stain, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, some weeks ago, uh, we were talking about this. Y'all instructed us to reach out to our real estate agents in the area here in Valdez. So I did, I sent out the document to them, asked them to fill it out and return it to me. Of the four companies, we've had two that actually returned responses, and they, you should have those in your agenda packet. So I just need direction on which firm or what y'all would like to do.
Would this, was like a motion on this, an action?
Uh, we need to decide which firm we want to go with.
I'm sorry?
We need to decide which realty firm we want to go with.
Well, a, a motion would do that, I guess. I looked, I looked at these two, I, it was really, it was great, the two of our local longstanding Realtors are willing to help the town and try to get the best, uh, possible sale price from this land that we do not use. There, there are vacant parcels, not necessarily prime building spots, so they're gonna need some marketing. Two of the real estate firms came forward with proposals. They, uh, they talked about what their fees would be, and they talked about, uh, how they would market them, and they gave the rec, the history of the number of listings and sales they've had in the last, uh, two years. The one with the, uh, least restrictions and the most sales would be, uh, Thompson Realty, and as I went through them, I checked off the pluses, and, I mean, I just counted off the pluses on each one. I thought Thompson Realty had, uh, the most check marks on my list, so I'd like to move that we engage Thompson Realty for that. If, if there's, you know, a second and a further discussion, anybody wants to suggest something alternative, I'm fine with that too.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Is it possible that we could use both firms and divide the properties in half? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think we need to look at, at all or both, there's no question. I don't think we need to limit ourselves to one.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't. We only, we only have about five saleable properties. Uh, they're not prime properties, we're not talking about a million dollars worth of property here, we're talking about a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars worth of property. For, if, if one of these firms goes out and markets them, they're gonna spend some money on that. I don't know how you could, two of them could justify doing that. There's one other difference, one of them has a minimum fee of fifteen hundred dollars, a minimum listing fee. The other one has no minimum listing fee, so that could be a problem, you know, if we have, if we have to end up selling one for five thousand dollars, the fee would be four hundred dollars, we, town would have to pay eleven hundred dollars extra for the listing. for the listing fee. So I think we ought to go with the better of the two options, that's why I made the selection I did in the motion.
I agree, I don't see that there's enough property there to involve two realty companies.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of employing Thompson Realty to take care of our vacant property, signify by raising your right hand and stating yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Okay, item E, consideration of encroachment agreement, town right of way with Conterra Ultra Broadband LLC. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, this should be brief. A local business that has relocated into the old Currys Funeral Home Building, Catawba Valley Healthcare, they're seeking fiber, and Conterra has aligned along Main Street, and they're seeking to connect to their, the fiber to their business, and I'm just here to present and ask for approval of the encroachment agreement to allow that business to get fiber to their operation. It's approximately 108 feet, it's along Morganton Street. Conterra has complied with all of our requirements, and encroachment agreement, liability insurance, performance guarantee, pretty much anything we've asked them for, they have provided. So the only thing I'm asking this evening is that you just approve the encroachment agreement, so that Catawba Valley Healthcare can, can get fiber to, to the location, simply put.
Counsel, questions?
I have a few, from my great interest in broadband internet capabilities, is this, this is a fiber optic cable, is that right?
That is correct. Conterra has a fiber optic cable that runs along Main Street, that was installed years ago. Matter of fact, I think, as you know, I think I informed you in an early conversation, the town of Valdez is also connected to Conterra by, through fiber.
So Conterra would have how much cable already installed into the...
I can't speak in terms of the linear footage of cable already installed, I can't tell you that it is installed along Main Street, and I believe it even extends all the way to Rutherford College, and possibly to the hospital.
Possibly connecting the two hospitals?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Now, are they, so they've been around for a while, did, did we have any problem with the installations they did in the past?
No, sir, and of course, I've been around a while, too, but...
You would know.
That's the reason I, that's the reason...
When I looked up Conterra, I found out that they're based, they're based in Charlotte, they're a multi-billion dollar firm, and we haven't had any problems with them, though. And how many miles of underground encroachment are they going to be doing here?
Not miles, feet, footage, 108 feet.
108 feet?
Yes, sir, just from the intersection of Morgan Street, right there, Jack be quick, just back to 108 feet, to the property line, or to the property where the business is being located.
Will they be crossing very many streets?
No, sir, just running along Morgan Street.
Okay. Now, how, what can we do to make sure they fix it up, repair it the way they think of it?
As indicated, as I indicated in my presentation, they have provided a performance bond...
Okay.
...to do that. Of course, they also have liability insurance, which they also signed off on, any and everything that we are required to them, required of them, to ensure that they do the appropriate job, where our council wouldn't be getting calls, even if, given the length of this line, they have, they have done. So, we have a performance bond at, for ten thousand dollars, just to run 108 feet.
A performance bond of how much?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
For 100 feet?
Yes, sir.
I hate to ask this question, but I have to.
Go for it.
This is the elephant question in the room.
Always.
This huge, multi-billion dollar company that's been in Valdez for years, and caused no, they've had, they've not torn up any streets that we know of, that we remember, they're going to encroach 108 feet of, of our earth to move, to connect two fiber points, and we are forcing them to spend the money for a 10,000 dollar performance bond versus a startup company that has cut up 35 miles of our streets with no, with no leverage whatsoever to assure they finish them. So, I don't, I don't expect you to answer that question, but that's a hypothetical question.
I'll answer the question, you may not agree with the answer, but I'll answer the question.
Go ahead.
Your question is, why would we allow someone go through a, a new company, startup company, go through a process?
No, no, that's not my question, my question, why did we not require a year ago? That's my question, if you want to answer the question, that's the question.
I can't speak to a year ago, because I wasn't, I wasn't, well, if I may answer, the reason I can't answer that question is because I wasn't part of the decision-making process to allow foothills. But I am involved in Conterra.
Thank you.
And that is, that is the reason.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the encroachment agreement with Conterra Ultra Broadband.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the encroachment agreement with Conterra Ultra Broadband LLC.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, stating yes?
Yes.
Seeing none, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, management court, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you have several items. First, family Friday nights continue each Friday in June on Temple Field from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. B, special call meeting scheduled for Friday, June 21st, 2024, at 8:45 AM at Valdez Town Hall, to go into closed session pursuant to NC General Statute 143-318 regarding personnel. Item C, Valdez Independence Day celebration is Friday, June 28th, 2024, at 6:00 PM on Main Street. Item D, next agenda review council meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 29th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in council chambers here at the Valdez Town Hall. And item E, next regular council meeting scheduled for Monday, August 5th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in council chambers here in Valdez Town Hall.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel, any comments?
I may have a couple, as always, but I don't want to go first, if anybody else wishes to speak.
Have it.
Well, thank you. First of all, I want to, I want to thank everybody for tolerating the amount of change we've experienced this year. I thank the citizens who came forward and participated in, in strategic planning effort and helped us set the priorities for the year. I thank the citizens who stepped forward even further and agreed to serve on committees. I thank the staff for hanging in there and doing all their hard work, and as somebody mentioned earlier this evening, in spite of what you heard for the last prior six months, nobody got fired. And especially the message to all the people that we heard from who were suffering under their tax bills last year, the good news, the good news is that you're getting a 20% cut when you receive your 2024 bill. 20% cut in the Valdez tax rate. Burke County rates the same as it was last year, as far as I know, but you're getting a 20% cut in your Valdez tax rate. The good news along with that is, there were no cuts in services. And the great news for all the people who feel we should not, we did not need that tax cut, is you can take that 20% that you saved, please, write a check to the town, and designate on it what you'd like to go for. You can support the Old Rock School renovation, or future renovation, you can support the new public safety building, you can designate it to the permanent structure at the swimming pool, and you'll get a letter from the chief financial officer that you can use in your tax return as a charitable deduction, because your donation of that 20% that you're going to save on your taxes this year will get you a tax deduction, just like it would if you would pay any taxes. But it does the town good. So, thank you for all that. I don't have any bad news, I think the other thing is that we're, we're, as you, as you may not, as you may have noticed, or may not have noticed, the town council doesn't have another formal meeting until August, I think it's the 5th, first week of August. So this meeting is, takes place in July meeting. So we're not going to see you until after, after Independence Day in Valdez, and after July 4th, which is Independence Day for the rest of the world. But when we come back, we hope that we'll have a permanent manager in place, and we're all looking forward to a great, another year with Valdez. Oh, committees, I want to remind you that we brought up the issue, the possible, well, we approved three additional committees at the last meeting. I don't know how many applications we've had from citizens who are interested in serving on those, but I know there have been some who want to serve on the merchants advisory committee, but Mr. Kamal, I think, has left, but his, his point that he brought up this evening is the kind of thing that the utilities advisory committee could help with. It's not to do the engineering work of our utilities, but it's to have a place that citizens can go to, a group of people, look around the town, where are the problems that need to be, that we need to have the solutions of these engineering firms apply. So that's, that's, that's the purpose of this kind of advisory committee, it's not to do the work of the experts, it's not to take over the work of the staff, it's to get citizens' input and help guide the staff and the council on what needs to be done. But, Larry, thank you all very much for coming tonight.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thanks to everyone who helped us with the budget and getting it ready, thank you. I specifically, I just want to, this is the elephant in the room, I'm going to, I just want to say thank you, Councilman Harvey, for addressing things that I personally would have never thought to address, and I appreciate that. I appreciate you asking hard questions that make me even go, what in the world is he asking again today? Because I get the, we all get the emails, and sometimes I'm going, what now, oh no, but it's, those are the kind of questions that we have to ask, and I appreciate that. I appreciate Rexanna and Paul and Gary for getting in there, digging in, and seeing what needs to be done to help the town, and always being there for, with a smile for each other and for our citizens, y'all have been phenomenal to work with, I enjoy the fact that we're getting to know each other a little more, and we're getting things done. And I appreciate all of you for showing up and letting us know what you want. And the citizens advisory committees, those are phenomenal, I am loving the fact that I have citizens coming up to me saying, thank you for giving us more ways to get involved. The merchants coming up and saying, thank you, I really am excited, because we're going to get to be heard again. I'm really looking forward to the next year, now that we've got this hurdle over with, it's our first big one together, I look forward to working with you guys for the next year and seeing where Valdez can go to make it even greater, so.
Anyone else? Okay, counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee.
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There'll be no action taken in the closed session, and we'll come back out here if any action is needed. I need a motion to approve the contract amendment for manager Stein.
I make a motion that we approve the contract amendment for manager Brian Stein.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Okay, none opposed, motion carries, and a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry.